This conference will now be recorded.
Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. Our topics here are, we're going to, we're going to start with, making sure that I got the right one in front of me. Yeah, we're going to start with our county manager update and I'll turn it over to Don Boone.
Thank you Chair Quilin, members of the board. Good morning. So we are, we set aside just a few minutes for the work session so that it gives me an opportunity to introduce certain topics to your board or just have a conversation if your board has anything on your mind. But one of the things I wanted to mention this morning, and I think many of you received this request personally, was from the group that is working on funding a Vietnam War memorial down at the Oregon State Capitol grounds. The governor signed a bill that, that, that allows citing of, of this memorial. And so there's a group of folks that are fundraising. It's about a $2.7 million project, and they have reached out to all 36 counties. At this point, I think three counties, Klamath, Lynn, and Lincoln have actually made contributions to the memorial fund. Others have endorsed the effort but haven't made contribution. So I just wanted to just introduce that no decisions need to be made today. But if you like to share your thoughts, I'm totally open. So, so that's one topic. And then real quick, and then see if there's any questions. I want to give a quick update about the redistricting process. We just finished five public workshops soliciting feedback from, from residents about what considerations they think the board and the county should be making as we do the, do the redistricting effort. There's a survey that's still on the county website. And so if you would like to fill out the survey or if you'd like to share it, it is there. And again, it's just asked a series of questions about how folks are feeling and what they would like to get out of, out of the redistricting. And not surprisingly, we've heard some that have said that they would like, you know, the commissioner districts, the ones that are representing cities to be more city focused. So like in Astoria currently, there's three commissioner districts that touch Astoria. You know, there's some comments that would be, you know, less, instead of three, maybe two, and maybe have one, you know, commissioner district that is really city of Warrenton. So those are the kinds of feedback we've been getting. So we'll share the feedback with the board after we get done with the outreach process. And again, the outreach process is being orchestrated by PSU Kitchen Table, which is a public engagement component to the Center for Public Service. So that's what I have right now, and I'm happy to take any feedback about the Vietnam War memorial if you have any. So.
John, did I see that Commissioner Thompson has a question?
Well, actually, it's less of a question and more of a, you know, generally speaking, I'm supportive of the concept. I'm not wanting to bankrupt Clatsop County. I know that sometimes the use of force is considered problematic. But, you know, folks went and served their country the best they knew how. And there were lingering, lingering pains that came from that. County manager, do you know how much those other three counties contributed to this effort or?
Commissioner Thompson, we are reaching out to, to the other counties now to, to see what their funding level was. But I don't think it was, it was a big figure. I think it's, I, I think that from the county side, folks know that there are limits to what counties can contribute. But I, but, but we will follow up and find out.
Thank you. And I will say I've changed my position somewhat from when I was out marching in the streets with my child on my back to say, I didn't think we should be in that war. But I'm trying to have a more nuanced perspective for the pain then and the pain now and look to go forward as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Appreciate your comments and appreciate your perspective as well. I am generally supportive and I think maybe we need to discuss about exactly what kind of financial contribution we would be comfortable making. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, this, this is an easy one for me. I actually got arrested in Washington DC, my, the only thing on my rap sheet. Working in American Friends Service Committee, marching in, in one of their anti-war protests. And damn near got thrown out of college for doing so. But um, I also lost somebody, I lost lots of people in Vietnam, but one of them was someone I expected to spend the rest of my life with. So I have, and I don't see, I don't see a lot of, what's the word, evidence? I don't see, see a lot of memorials in Oregon for the Vietnam War. And, you know, it was, its effect was far more than the 55,000 lives that we, that we lost. For each one of those 55,000 men and women, we, they are probably, you know, 50 or 100 each who, who are rather devastated by their death. And I think it's, this is almost a, to me, a tribute to my generation. We've been through a lot. And, and this was, you know, this, this was a long war. People died for eight years, I think. And I'm very, very much in support of, of something like this. And I think that if it were done in Salem, it would be exposed to more people. It would, it would be something that would be, you know, kind of at the center of the state and in our capital. I would be very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Your, your comments are well taken and I really appreciate you sharing that personal story as well. Mr. Toyoka? Can't, can't hear you, John. Yeah, still can't hear you. It doesn't say mute, but you're not coming through.
How about now?
Can hear you now. Yep.
All right. Perfect.
Now we can't.
And again?
Yep, can hear you now.
Okay. I'm not touching a thing. As I said, I am in support of recognizing those individuals who made the ultimate sacrifice as, as they took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. It represents, you know, their beliefs, their thoughts, and their defense for all of us here in the state side. Whether you believe in the wars that they fought, that are fought in the world, I think is irrelevant. It's, it's about the individuals who made those sacrifices, you know, in support of this country. And I think that's what those, those are recognizing is that individual dedication to service, individual commitment and individual sacrifice for the greater good. I think that is what is recognized, not the actual event. So I'm in favor of that. The question is, or if it's in Salem, will the individuals who serve from Clatsop County be recognized?
And Commissioner, what I would say is what I know right now is that, is that yes, that all, all the state, I mean, this is really focused on those that have served from the state of Oregon. And so there are, there are different, there are different elements of the memorial. And one of those elements will be recognizing those that gave the ultimate sacrifice and who are from Oregon. So. And I don't know how they're going to present that or anything else, but that was one of the focuses of the broader memorial.
Thank you, county manager. And I see Commissioner Banks has her hand up.
I'm in support and I agree with Commissioner Toyoka in, you know, wanting to make sure that our, our local constituents are those who, you know, that they are recognized. If, if we're going down this path, that they have the recognition they deserve.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, it, it also occurs to me that one of the things that I would like to see included in, in such a memorial is not just to those who didn't come home. Because I think that Vietnam was, in my generation, the first time we recognized the lingering effects of war on those who do come. And, and I think that we, we, we were particularly pained by the immediate reaction of many Americans to those who came back and not only weren't memorialized, but weren't, that were treated very poorly. So any kind of a memorial, like, I don't know, has, I mean, Don, has it been designed? I mean, is there a, there is a design. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner, it has been designed and the design has been signed off by the Oregon State Parks. And what I will send, just in case you haven't seen it, is a link from their director that has details about the, the actual memorial and what the different components are and what the, what the vision is. Because it is, it's a very broad vision that is attempting to really pay respect to, to those who served, to the, to the families. And so their, their, their vision is very broad.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, county manager. Sounds like we have unanimous support. Certainly would love to see more of it and maybe do our due diligence about what other counties are, are contributing. So we'll bring this back, but initially it sounds like we have a broad support for this.
All right. Thank you, board.
Do we have any other questions for our county manager? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, county manager, it is, at what point are, are we going to be briefed on the redistricting? The local redistricting issues that we've been talking about?
We'll be coming back to your board, Commissioner, in, I think it's November with, with the feedback from the survey as well as some more detailed maps that then you can, you know, we, because we need to have some very specific and detailed conversations at, at the boundary level. And so we'll be coming back with that. I think that will probably happen in November, early November. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don, will that be a, a work session that we will first have that?
Yes, um, yeah, yes, Commissioner, I'm envisioning it being a, a, a work session. And what I'm hoping to do is to provide the board with maps that you can digest on your own. Because as you can imagine, you will all see different things and have various comments. And so, so we will provide the information to you beforehand, but then we'll have a work session to then discuss it.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, did you have a question?
I did. Well, so it's a political process that puts each of us commissioners into office. And, and now this, here we look at redistricting and that's the essence of a political process, right? I mean, afterward, I try and put that aside and do governing from the middle, the moderate pragmatic middle. But county council, is there any legal constraint on commissioner interaction in the setting of these boundaries? Just curious about that, since it does have an impact on at least three of us going forward immediately?
Our charter is actually the legal document that we would follow for our redistricting process. And the process that the county manager has set out really has, have, has followed that timeline and the process of the charter. So my recommendation is if we follow the charter and we go through the process, we are on good grounds and good standing with our charter.
Thank you. Always want to know what the law is.
And if, if I might, Commissioner, is that the ultimate decision maker is the board of, of commissioners per the charter. And so what the charter requires is that the county clerk make a recommendation. But like all things, if the ultimate decision maker is the board, having board participation and board involvement in that public process leading to that recommendation is important. So, so, you know, we value the de-board's input as we go through this as the final decision maker.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Thank you, county manager. Commissioner Webb?
Is it possible for us to be briefed about the, the public meetings that were held prior to a few weeks from now? I mean, can we know what the attendance was and, and what the general feedback is?
Yes, Commissioner, we, we certainly can. The, the engagement process is still ongoing with the survey. And so, but, 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 but we can certainly give you a summary of what we've heard to date. But what we hope is that we'll get more survey input over the next weeks. And then we'll summarize all of that in a final package to provide to your board as input to the process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Where is the survey link located?
I'm going to let Monica take that one if you don't mind, Monica.
Yeah, it's on the county website. And so when you are going through our new county website and you scroll down and there's kind of like the highlighted feature items, there's, you can click on one of those. It discusses the redistricting process. And, and so you'll find the link there. And additionally, if you weren't able to participate in one of the public forums, there's also a video. It's about, oh, not quite five minutes, that just kind of talks about the purpose of the redistricting process and trying to shift the populations and such. And so, yeah.
Is it possible to put that on the homepage? Just curious.
We can, we can refresh it and get it back there. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, county manager, for the report. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the Clatsop Economic Development Resources and Small Business Development Center report. Got Director Kevin Leahy with us, and I will go ahead and turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Chair Quilin. Good morning, everybody. So I guess my first question would be to Teresa. If, okay, are you going to share? I'm the presenter. Okay. That's, that's the answer to my question here. Okay, so let me, let me get to my.
Perfect.
Yep. You can see it. Okay, perfect. So let me see if I can get.
Kevin?
Yes?
Change it to the slideshow?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do here. Let me just, I need to flip over to the side here and your faces are hiding my slideshow. So just, Teresa, do I just, do I just close this? I apologize, everybody.
Up at the top, if you click slideshow, you, the bar at the, yeah.
There we go. Thank you. I should, I should know that by now, right?
From beginning.
Let me start at the beginning. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity. Can you see that now?
Yeah, you can click right up at that from the beginning under the slideshow. Yeah, up, up above.
Go to the left.
Go to the left, on the far left, far left corner from the, you can click that. I think that'll show the, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There were so many different formats of the presentation site. So this is the Clatsop County Commission Annual Update. I'm so pleased to do this. Thank you for the invitation. You know, I grew up in retail and I know you all have copies of this before you all see what I'm sharing here on the screen. I grew up in retail where it's like kind of what did you do for me yesterday versus a year ago? But I did want to recap some of the, the highlights of this past year, 2020, and then go into 2021, where Cedar did manage $2.3 million in small business relief grant programs that were allocated to 323 Clatsop County small businesses and nonprofits, including the dollars from the county that we managed. And we're so happy to work with the county on that. And Meyer Freeman, who was our grant manager, did a great job. It's interesting on these grants that I know that some nonprofits, quote unquote, take a pretty big indirect when they get funding, and we didn't take any, we took zero indirect. The only thing that we covered was Meyer's payroll. So that got more business, more dollars added to our business community. And this is just the recap of the committees that I have served on, continue to serve on, being the economic recovery lead for the, designated by SBA through Clatsop County. I continued as a member of the Clatsop Forestry Economic Development Committee. I'm going to talk about that a little bit here in the 2021 update. Worked on the Clatsop County Strategic Plan as the Economic Development Organization for Clatsop County. I did update the survey in terms of the input, in terms of the work plan for that, and looking at working very closely with, with county manager Boone and Monica and the commissioners on achieving the goals that we set, including like the, the toolkit, for example, for our businesses that we need that to jump onto. That was a, a plan that we're looking to work on pretty quickly here. Enterprise Zone, Fort George, investing $12.5 million in the Astoria Warehouse Facility. And that secured the 15-year property tax exemption. You were all a key part of that. Thank you again for your support. And Clatsop Works, we did pivot the Summer 2020 Program during COVID-19 with 12 host employers and 18 summer interns. And I'll update on the next one here, 2021 priorities this year. So a lot of, of course, grant dollars who are working through, working closely with the county, working with Coal PAC, working with Regional Solutions to best benefit. And of course, I try to stay in my lane, which is economic development and for the business community. So a lot of great work is in, in progress for that. Continue on the COVID-19 committees through the governor's office, et cetera. We did receive funding from Coal PAC for Cedar and the Clatsop Small Business Development Center capacity building. And that is helping to fund some of the positions I will, I'll refer to in my SBDC update. And this year, again, thank you, commissioners, we had work sessions, we had meetings with the four sponsors for Bowie Beer and the Schooler Company. Seems like, like a year ago, but it was this spring, $18.5 million that were approved. And on our Clatsop Works, this year, we had 14 interns and 12 employers for the, the summer of 2021. And it's interesting, we, you know, we struggled working very closely with the schools and with Clatsop Community College. That's our summer paid internship program. We're, we are going into year five now. Struggled with the students being out there virtually and trying to reach them. The employers from day one have been so supportive. We actually had to leave a few employers on the side because we didn't have enough interns. So we're working really aggressively for this year and to really to work as strategically as we can with the schools and with Clatsop Community College to get more students that will be applying for the Summer of 2022 program. And we actually have Craig Hoppus and I, our work together, we have a work session tomorrow with all the school superintendents from the five school districts and the principals and private sector partners, including, thank you Monica Steele for attending. Resident Clatsop County has been a key supporter of the program. It's an hour work session talking about, you know, not just a narrative of what we do, but how can we make it better? And we also, that's tomorrow from 10 to, 9 to 10:30. We also have, I've been working with Miranda Scheiding from the Northwest ESD from the very beginning. She wrote a $300,000 grant through Working Community Foundation that was approved. Some of the dollars will be coming to Clatsop County to our Clatsop Works program. And we're looking for more, more outreach to the middle schools and to the younger, the younger students as they evolve into our future business leaders tomorrow. Also, since we met last, I've also given the additional responsibility at Clatsop Community College for overseeing the Cooperative Work Experience Program at the college. That is the four credit portion of the house, if you will, on the academic side. The student takes 15 credits. They also do work, they also work experience with like, let's say, the sheriff's department or the police department or the fire department, et cetera, and they get credit for that. So we have the paid internships. So you're kind of the one stop that we're working on. And Ryan Stanley continues as the coordinator of that. We had a great Cedar Awards event on May 20th. Several of you attended. Thank you. It was virtual. So happy for the award winners. Of course, that's always the highlight of the entire event to be showcasing our businesses. And CFEDC, I am currently the vice chair, as I stated. Commissioner Banks serves on a committee representing the county commissioners. And we have postponed, unfortunately, our leaders tour again to 2022. But we're working as a committee with the school districts to do something in the winter months, early, like January, February, for our students to go perhaps on a field trip or sharing the career opportunities in that sector. And I have secured, I believe we confirmed that our committee will be coming to give an update to the commissioners. We do that on an annual basis to talk about CFEDC. I always, you know, my role is that, as the Economic Development Director for the county is talking about the economic impact. We do have Chad Washington from Greenwood Resources is our chair. And we have some of the private sector folks we've had in the past, like Lois from Hampton Mill, for example, talk about the economic impact. John Nygaard serves on this committee, et cetera, et cetera. So more to come on that. And then the Childcare Advisory Committee, Commissioner Quilin, I'm sure we'll talk about this, but we did have our kickoff meeting. You know, we've had a lot of meetings, but the, the advisory group met last week. I was able to zoom in from Sun River for my SBDC directors conference. Felt it was a good first meeting, great people involved on this, on the core committee and then the broader committee. And what I'm bringing to the table at our November 9th meeting is some of the SBDCs around the state and EDCs around the state of Oregon are doing very entrepreneurial work in the, in this very complex conversation. And I'll be sharing some programs that are, that have been happening out of Ben, just starting, for example, where I'll give an example that if somebody starts a home-based daycare and they go through advising with the SBDC and they go through this, this process, at the very end of that process, they will receive a $5,000 grant to open their daycare. You know, and I know there's other programs, it's like a thousand dollars, $5,000 is meaningful in any sector. So, so that is, that, I'm, again, I'm happy to answer your questions as I go through this. I don't want to just be, you know, the talking guy. I'll keep going. Is that okay?
Yeah, keep going.
Thank you. So this is our Cedar budget that was approved for this fiscal year, which is July 1st to, to June 30th. Sorry, that on the telephone typo here. It's from July 1st to June 30th of 2022. Thank you again to the county for their continued sponsorship. We did sign a five-year contract. I will always, of course, come and give these annual updates to the county commissioners, answer any questions. But that's the $70,000, this was, I'm sorry, this particular slide was for our board meeting that we had recently. And this was showing, the, the left is the plan, the right is the actual. And the actual, for example, we had not received the county check in for this reporting period through our bank and through our CPA and our bookkeeper, but that check has since arrived. So just quickly, county, the cities, all five cities, I'm actually going before the Gearhart City Commission in early November. They had decided not to renew the Cedar contract, which I'm still a little very stymied about. And so I'm going to go before the county, the, the city council to update Cedar and answer any questions. I'm not understanding why that, but so that's, that's one question mark. The other one's confirmed. I go before the city of Seaside doing a similar, I feel like I'm doing now. I'm scheduled to do that in early November. Very confident we'll receive the funding and they've increased the funding actually the last year, as has the city of Astoria. The cash match, this is Clatsop Community College. This is on the SBDC side of the house. So this is, in order to be an SBDC center, one of 19 in the state, the college has to match, have a cash match. That's a $42,000. And I just, on the actual, by the way, that's a year-to-date actual, in some cases. And I just, on the actual, by the way, that's a year-to-date actual, in some cases, it's a proration uh by month where we're at uh year-to-date. The federal and SBDC contracts, that's combined SBA and Business Oregon. I know you're all aware, and thank you again to the Commissioners, you you wrote letters of support where Governor Brown's budget last year proposed a 40% cut to the SBDC budget when uh we'd had the best year in my 10 years as director and and ever supporting our business community through COVID. Um, I roll ahead, scratcher, but thank you again for your support. And based on the letter, the support and the leadership from Senator Betsy Johnson, Representative Weber, Dave Gomberg, uh, we were able to, the legislature was able to not only restore the funding, but add an additional million dollars on top of that. That we're, I'm on a budget committee for the statewide network right now, working on how those dollars will be allocated to service our small business community. Carryover, that's our checking account balance. The expenses, for the most part, it's the wages and the fringe for myself and Jessica Newhall, our Associate Director, as well as Tammy Lambert, a portion of her salary and benefit. The rent that we do pay the college, we do pay uh Clatsop Community College $9,000 a year, Cedar does, for having a spacer at the South County Office. The consultants, counselors, etc., is is our estimate for the part-time advisors that we have. And again, I'll share more details on it in a few minutes. And again, Mark, let me know how I'm doing on time here. I know, I know.
You're doing great.
Again, the details here, I'm very excited. So just let me know if I'm, if I'm going through too much detail, everybody.
No, no, this is good. We got time.
Okay, thank you. And then there's, again, the revenue down below there. And again, you see that my gear heart comment that I I commented on that I'm I've been meeting with their council and with uh Mayor Pilina um shortly. Uh, Clatsop College, again, I think that, and so that's the financial. And again, I can go to the next slide now. See if you have any questions on that. Thank you. This is just a thank you to our contributors. Uh, we have been, I'm in the director now for over 10 years. In the first couple of years, we did not have any private sector members other than Pacific Power. And uh, at the time, it was, well, it was uh Clatsop Community Bank. So I've worked really hard and we're so thankful for the private sector. Uh, and of course, the public sector, which we mentioned here to the right here. But the contributions that businesses make and individuals make anywhere from $50 to $5,000 to support the the working efforts of Cedar and the SBDC and all the work that we do. And a lot of those, that funding does go towards funding our part-time advisors and the work that we do on that side. Uh, Clatsop Community College recap here. The, for the uh training and education uh for 2020. I think you've heard me some of, I think most of you have you've heard me say this, but I I give Jessica Newhall, Meyer Freeman, Tammy Lambert, our team so much credit here. We took our training advance from uh 2019 from 43 to 69. More importantly, we took our attendance from 337 live to almost 2,400 attendees in 2020. And by the way, again, I say this every every time, every opportunity I have, we're one of the smaller centers in the state of Oregon. I think out of the 19 centers uh social community college, I would say we're probably like number 16, 15 or 16. We have the number one, number one attendance of all the community college SBDCs in our training this past year. More so than PCC, Lane, Shamakata. Should I, should I go on? I'd like to, but anyway, very excited about that. And that continues for this year. Economic impact, uh, the capital infusion, that is helping our businesses. A lot of that, it was the idle, the paycheck protection plan dollars, etc., we helped our businesses with. Had a little uh downtrend on business starts. Not many people were starting businesses during COVID, but we're getting back on track this year. Jobs created and retained and increased sales. Increased sales in 2020, the year, uh, you know, full year of COVID, $2.4 million with our businesses that reported. And again, just to mention, these have to be signed and authorized by each business owner that that we have worked with them on this. And this is turned into SBA. This becomes official documentation for the work that we do. Uh, for 2021 year-to-date, we served uh served 213 clients. Uh, this is as of about a month ago when I submitted this information to Teresa or three weeks ago uh versus the entire year of 2020. So we're tracking higher this year than last year in terms of clients. Counseling hours, 957, you do the math on that. We will match or exceed last year's numbers. And again, where we're at right now, we have 29 workshops we've done year-to-date with 1,100 attendees. Some of our workshops, by the way, last year, we had one workshop on paycheck protection plan that had 180 people on the on the workshop. So that kind of skewed the numbers. But uh, we we have, right now, going on, we have a business bootcamp that was rolled out yesterday for new businesses that we had, Meyer Freeman leads that. We had 10 businesses participate last summer in that. These are new businesses in Clatsop County, startups. And we launched one yesterday. We had seven businesses in the in our fall uh business bootcamp. We actually have our Small Business Management Program. That is, uh, we are taking, I wrote an article in the Coast Guard Business Journal yesterday about that. We've been sharing it in our other updates. This is the program that's been part of the college for over 40 years that the SBDC oversees. 12 to 15 businesses um enroll in this for a nine-month period. Uh, currently it's going to be on Zoom. We really want to go back to live as soon as we can. But currently on Zoom, twice a month sessions, two hours each session. And in between those sessions, one-on-one advising with a business owner that one of our advisors does. And so uh, we're looking for 12 to 15 businesses in full recruitment mode. The um, the uh deadline for that is October 29th. And so any help the Commissioners or staff can be to help us have folks come and apply. It is an application process. It isn't like you pass the notes, pass your in. We went through that years ago. That was not a good thing. So we go through, we do an interview process with the applicants. And then we accept them uh or not into the program. And it's incumbent on the business owner. And this is focused on businesses, by the way. Small businesses anywhere from like one to five years old. But we will take businesses that have been in business for a longer time period, but it is focused on more of the small business. And this is the signature program for um not only our Clatsop SBDC, but also for our statewide net um SBDC, the um SBM program. Scale Oregon is just a specialized program we did this spring. Jessica Newhall did with, actually with Bowie Beer. And we worked with them on marketing uh their business and to help them with their substantial growth. So that was a special program that we had and wanted to draw attention to that. And I I've kind of mentioned already um in terms of some of the extra things that we're doing, I just want to mention. And again, these are positions are 100% grant funded through CARES Act funding currently, through Coal Pack and uh um and other conversations that are happening. So we were able to add Jimmy Heas, who is our marketing specialist. I'm hoping that all the Commissioners and staff receives our Monday newsletter. It comes out religiously. If you don't, please let me know. Send me a text or tell Teresa she'll send me, you know, or just respond to me directly. We'll make sure that you're on there because we were, this is Jim's main role and we're, and a lot of great information, not just locally, but regionally and nationally. Ian Reed, we've just brought on again. My article in the CRBJ yesterday talked about his background. Uh, he lives in Cannon Beach, uh entrepreneur. Uh, he and his wife live there with their, with their dog. Great guy. He has ED, he has economic development background. He's from Canada. Uh, relocated to Cannon Beach, Tolbannon Park a few years ago. And again, just you never know the the gems. And we know we have a lot of gems here in Clatsop County. So I'm really excited about um Ian joining us. And I mentioned, Rosio Simmons. I think several of you know Rosio. She was on Casao Spahn's board for many years. And she was the one who assisted Meyer and myself with the CARES Act money last year uh for the Latino business community. She volunteered, did a great job, was very inspired by the work that we do on the SBDC and Cedar side. So she, we brought her on as a Latino and general business advisor. She's going to be a great addition. And Eric Strongquist just added, Eric was the co-founder of Hotlet's Pizza back in the 80s. He, he worked, he served tables at Jake's. Maybe some of us had him, wait on us back in the day. Uh, but he eventually worked his way up in the education front. He was the president of the Oregon Culinary Institute most recently. It closed in 2015. He and his wife retired to Astoria two years ago and we got him. And he's very excited. He wants, you know, that's, that's the key here. He wants to give back to the community. And uh, very excited. And in addition, of course, to Jessica, I think you're all aware, most of you were, Jessica had a little baby girl a month ago, so she's on her maternity leave until uh December. We we miss her. I miss her a lot. And she'll be back in December. But and then with Tammy, Meyer, um, and Airme Cho continues as our Latino advisor also. So we have now two Latino advisors. We've launched uh Spanish-speaking courses and I already talked about our signature program, SBDC. So is there any questions on the SBDC before I can go into Clatsop Works and just give some updates and then and continue on here, then we can, I can answer any questions you have. So our Clatsop Works program, uh, again, this, I give the recap year by year here. And again, thank you to Clatsop County. You can see the partners are listed. And we had work, weekly professional development workshops. Again, thank you, Monica. Careers in Local Government was one of the workshops this past summer. And uh, we had a combination, for the most part, the interns were virtual. But this year, we're going to be doing live and virtual both. The other thing we're going to talk about in the um work session tomorrow, several of these interns have continued to work with their employers from the summer, including the Clatsop County. So it's, again, it's a career exploration opportunity. I mean, I will, I'll be honest, some of our school districts still come to me as recently as last week with, you know, Kevin, uh, our our students can get a job anywhere, make a lot of money in the summer. And you know, Clatsop Works is kind of a heavy lift. And we talk about, uh, you know, of course, it's clear exploration. They are fully paid. Uh, they are, it's not just seasonal in some cases. They can continue on to earn your income. And most of the, all the employers pay at least minimum wage. And it's a competitive environment. So I I really work uh hard with our schools that um kind of have that mentality. And we're just working to change that mentality. I'll work together with the schools on that. Cooperative work experience. I would tell you candidly, this is a program that has been, um, I I've said in the intensive care unit, I probably would still say that a little bit at the college, uh, when we were uh, when we were asked to take over the program last year, last November, almost a year ago. But Ryan, we're working really hard uh to get the word out. Um, traditionally, this is more in winter term and uh spring term. You see here that the uh, the programs I've studied that we have had with fire science, criminal justice, biology, business, automotive. Um, thank you, John, etc., etc. So uh, this is something that we're working on. Again, we're kind of starting from scratch. Uh, we're working with Lane Community College and other community colleges that have a really great program. Uh, we're rewriting, we're rewriting and updating all the material. Uh, because most of it was from the 80s and the 90s. So anyway, we're excited about this. And just another way that that we look to impact the economy here in Clatsop County for our students and then they they become our future uh managers, owners, etc., etc. So I think here uh, that is the end of my presentation. Let's see, do I, I don't want to, I don't want to click something that kick me out of the meeting here. Do I do the little red box here in the bottom left? No, that's leave meeting. That's why I said I don't want to leave the meeting. Let me. I'm happy to answer, like I said, happy to answer any questions. Yeah, I don't want to be, there we go. Thank you. You don't want to be pressing things. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not the one calling it, but Commissioner Quillikin, sorry.
So, so the chairs recognize Commissioner Thompson, Kevin. Kevin, one of the joys, uh, I think in my life and every Commissioner sitting here is the opportunity to work with you. Because what you're doing is creating and establishing long-term relationships so we can flourish. We can't have county services unless we have businesses that make money and pay taxes. That's it. You help do that at every single level. So uh, one of your supporters is my own little firm, Coherence Consulting, because I kick in some money because by golly, I want to let you know that I personally and professionally am so grateful for the work that you do. So that's one point.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. I think every Commissioner here has interacted with you in a variety of meetings and circumstances because you're pretty much everywhere doing everything. And we just try and keep up and magnify and integrate what you're doing with all of our connections. So, for example, we just supported Clatsop County colleagues. Thank you for your uh support. A Build Back Better Grant from Business Oregon for mass timber technology. Those relationships lead back to interactions that you've helped support with all.
Thank you. It's very exciting.
You know what? And Omic and everything. So we are becoming more functional and more productive to create and sustain businesses that provide revenue for families, that provide tax base for the county, and that provide quality goods and services for everybody here and beyond. So thank you for everything.
Well, thank you. I appreciate those kind of words. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Um, Kevin, one of the things that I particularly applaud about the way um the EDC is is doing business is you all have a terrific sense about marketing. And um, you know, I see your columns here. Um, people know you when I talk to the business owners in my, in my, among my constituents. They know who you are. They know what you guys are doing. Uh, I just think it's remarkable that that in this dispersed place um that, and I think sometimes we forget that, you know, we have a lot of businesses in rural areas in this county. Uh, and and you guys, you're so visible. And I think um, I I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Much appreciate it.
Any other comments from the members of the commission here? I really appreciate the the comprehensive report, uh, Kevin. And I I think both Commissioners uh said it quite well about how much we appreciate all you're doing in the community. Just to speak to the childcare and Commissioner Banks serves on the childcare task force along with me, we do appreciate the SBDC and uh Cedar being a part of that group because it is so important to have our businesses be a part of the solution. In fact, we're going to be leaning uh pretty hard on on you and 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 looking for uh some some models that you might be able to share with us that that work in other counties, other communities, and other states. So I, it's going to be a big uh, a big lift, uh, what we're trying to achieve. But but certainly uh, we appreciate your involvement in that. And and that is something that I think as as has been has been said previous is that that's not something you necessarily have to do. That's something that you have decided to to assist on and to take on. Uh, um, aside from all the other roles that you uh, that you are managing. So we do appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Quillikin. Appreciate that.
And if we don't have any other questions or comments, uh, I'll just say thank you very much, Kevin, for for the, for the report. Um, and we'll be talking to you soon. Next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Update. Draft Goals 6, 8, and 13. We've got the background and status reports on those. And I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So as part of our program and our process, uh, we have set up the system where we are bringing information to you on the goals to get some input on some of the bigger policy issues and uh bigger ticket items and concerns that are, we're seeing being raised in our citizen advisory committees. So today we're going to be speaking about uh Goal 6, which is air, water, land, resource uh quality. We'll be talking about Goal 8, recreational needs, and Goal 13, which is energy conservation. And we touched a little bit on these last week during our work session, particularly uh Goal 6 and Goal 8. So Goal 13 will be some new territory for us as we move forward. Uh, Goal 6 again is uh air, water, land, resource quality. And a lot of what will come in Goal 6 is going to be tied to federal and state requirements through EPA, Department of Environmental Quality. So uh, we have to make sure that any additional policies and regulations that we look at are going to be consistent with both the state regulations and federal requirements as well. One thing that we've seen, more than one thing, but the the big items that were discussed at our Citizen Advisory Committee meetings related primarily to about four different areas. Uh, specifically wildfires and the impacts those have on water and air quality. Uh, we know that wildfire is not as much of a threat at this point as we see in other parts of the state. But as uh, we look over the 2020 But as we look over the 20-year planning horizon, there's changes that will happen that may increase those risks for us. And so it's not just the immediate threat of structures burning and harm to people, but it's the, the long-term and more hidden indirect effects where we have impacts from the smoke, the particles that are in the air, which then settle into our water and our reservoirs. And when there are actual physical impacts to structures and cars and things like that, you know, all those chemicals that are released then do sink back into the groundwater. They get exposed into the air. And that does have impacts on our water and air quality here, looking over that 20-year planning horizon. So that was one of the first things. We also know that emissions have become a concern at the state level. And that Governor Brown did sign her emergency order back in March of 2020 that directed the state to cut its emissions by 2050. And so state agencies are in the process of creating rules. And we know that at some point, these rules will come down to the county level and the local government level. And we will need to review and address them. And so that we saw some recommendations coming from our citizen advisory committees that are in the memo that are related to the topic of emissions as well. I think the two biggest items that our committees have talked about and have stressed over and over in, in review of various different goals to date are the impacts and the need to protect our drinking water. And also the impacts that we will see and are seeing from failing septic systems. The board, back, I believe, on September 22nd, approved entering into an agreement with AOC for a water needs forum and contributed some financial funding to that or has agreed to in order to participate in water studies. And this also came up during our strategic plan last year, when the board created the environmental quality focus group. And I know that Commissioner Webb and I and members of the community and stakeholders did work on that committee. And, and one of the areas of focus and of concern was in particular, the Clatsop Plains area. And we know that Warrington is still in a moratorium with regard to new water hookups outside the city limits. And that is having a direct impact on unincorporated Clatsop County. We have housing developments out there that are planned and approved, but now we're on hold because they can't find a water source at this point. They had been guaranteed water from Warrington, but now Warrington has shifted that and is focusing on upgrading their, their systems as well. So the other thing that we hear about water protection relates to activities that affect surface waters, whether that's spraying activities in commercial timber businesses, or if it's pollution from roads and car and oil runoff. But the need to be able to protect drinking water and watersheds was very important to the citizen advisory committee members. And tying into that is, is the issue of septic systems. For the most part, the county is not in the business of providing water and sewer. Our exception would be the Westport sewer plant that we operate. But for the most part, everybody in unincorporated county is on a septic system. And that has impacts when septic systems start to fail. We see this a lot in the Clatsop Plains area, again, where we've been having discussions about eutrophication and the impacts on the lakes, the creation of algal blooms. And we see it a lot in our code compliance section here in community development when we are called out to homes that have clearly failing septic systems. Not only can you smell it, but you do the dye test and it percolates up the bright green color. But a lot of times, people don't have the funds to be able to make repairs or replace a septic system because it's very expensive. And what we're finding is even though state money has come down through Craft III and loans are available in certain circumstances, there's just not enough funding. And the, the need that we're seeing right now is huge. And I know that we also have concerns about septic haulage and how we're handling that. And I know that there are discussions about biodigesters at the county level that the board has been discussing. And then tying into all this as well, but slightly on a different subject. The other thing that we heard from our citizen advisory committee members is there's a vast need, at least from their perspective, to have more recycling opportunities made available. And I know that, I believe it's in December, there's a work session item to talk about our solid waste franchise agreements. But there was definitely a desire expressed to have in the Swenson area, down in Jewel, somewhere in the southwest area to have recycling drop-off points available. So that we're encouraging more recycling. So you can see that there's a lot of concern and recommendations that the committee members have put forward. Many of these things, the board's already been discussing in terms of the biodigestor, solid waste, the water studies. But really, when we look at these big policy issues, what we're looking for direction from the board on is, you know, to what extent does the county become involved in these projects? How much staff time do we have to commit to them? How much financial commitment are we able to make? And especially with regard to emissions, and we've, we've talked about this generally with the climate change issue, is to what extent do we just wait and monitor what's happening with the state? And to what extent do we want to be more proactive or be ahead of the state or with the state in our discussions? And so that was a lot of information. It was a lot of information for us to take in as staff, a lot of information for the committee members to take in as well. But that was a summary of our overview of what we're looking at and some of the direction that we would be looking to the board for in the future. So that concludes my presentation on goal six. And at that point, I'll just open it up for questions if anybody has any for me.
Any questions for our community development director? Commissioner Thompson?
Actually, Mr. Chair, thank you. More in the nature of a comment. Department Director Hendrickson, you and your staff have done such diligent, time-consuming, creative, compelling work. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank our community members who brought their passion and their conviction and their time and their intelligence to give us input about, about what they wanted. I think as a commissioner, I had some concerns about filtering out things that people wanted that weren't legal. And I think you've done that. Now I have another level of concern, which is the real cost of everything is always paid by someone. So when we look at what is legal, what is within our purview, our domain, what can we legally do? Then we have to look at what does it take to address this? What is the cost of this? Are there cost alternatives? Because otherwise, it's simply talk that doesn't go anywhere. And I think everybody connected with these issues is eager to have us have a productive result. So when we're looking for a productive result, now we get to the really interesting part, which is what are the various options for addressing these issues on an individual and a community-wide basis? Because there are individual activities that we can't control, but we can perhaps educate. Because we are advertising to create more and more people coming to Clatsop County. And as I drive our highways, they have left the evidence. They, everybody out there who has deposited garbage alongside the road has left evidence of their presence. I don't see anything here about roadside trash. But for me, this is a real issue because it's, it's something that degrades the quality, whether or not it pollutes. In fact, it probably does pollute. But it also violates the beauty of the place. So when I'm looking at air quality, I think about people who want to come to Clatsop County who feel entitled to start wood fires. Now, if there are only a few people who come, the engineers used to say the solution to pollution is dilution. So if you've only got a few people and a lot of air, it doesn't matter so much. If more and more people come, they build more and more beach fires, more and more campfires. And I'm just using this as an example because we all have a burden on the earth. We, we kill things to eat, even if it's carrots. We, we leave garbage. Everything that eats excretes. So we have to take all of that into account. Whose cost, what solutions? So I think we've come along well, but that's where I see we need to head next. Have we looked broadly enough? Are there things that we haven't considered? Like the cost of removing noxious weeds or the cost of collecting garbage as well as recycling? Then who pays those costs? And how do we do it in a way that's prudent? That's, that honors the beauty of our place and everybody who comes here. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
Um, I think one of the first things I spoke to county manager about when I became a commissioner was recycling in our underserved areas. And I know that there have been a lot of progress moving forward in that direction for all of our unincorporated underserved areas. And so I'm very excited for that to continually progress until our, our rural constituents can be served. Because I think recycling for me and, and basic, you know, steps to care for our environment are extremely important. I was glad to see that, you know, was that I wasn't the only one with that concern. But looking at this, I, I think, I think it's finding a balance as Commissioner Thompson is, is addressing on, on, A, for me, making sure that we're not implementing rules and regulations on private landowners that I feel are, is outside our purview as commissioners. I, just to be careful in the verbiage that we use throughout the document, without knowing what that verbiage is going to be, I can't really weigh in neither here nor there. I am concerned about drinking water. I am concerned about all of these things also. So I think what, what this whole document will come down to is how is it going to be written into the document? How much financial commitment are we as a county going to be committed to? And then weigh in also my hesitancy to impact private landowners any further than, than, you know, I, I, any further than then state regulations, basically. So those are kind of my boundaries. I'm curious though, Gail, what, do you have specific feedback that you're seeking from us?
I think a lot of it, we, the board's already in discussions on either through your strategic plan and the water studies that we've talked about during that, your commitment to work with AOC on a water study. I know you're working on biodigestors, but there may be more discussion with the strategic plan. It had been mentioned that possibly a moratorium on septic in the Clatsop Plains area might be considered. So I think if anything, that would probably be the big item that doesn't need an answer today, but the thing that we probably need to put in our thinking queue as we move forward.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, this is a question for Gail. On page, on agenda page 26, there is a map of the EPA-approved 2018-2020 Integrated Report on Water. And there are, this outlines an area that is considered impaired in terms of water quality, I think that is. But I'm not positive. I mean, is this, is that what the purple area here identifies? Is that what, what, in other words, I guess what I'm asking is what has impaired me?
I used to know the answer to that, and I don't remember it off the top of my head. So I can find that out and email that to the board.
Do you mean to tell the county commissioners that of the 4,800,095 assignments that we've given you, in the, you have, you have, there's one that you don't remember?
Actually, there's about 4,200,000 that I don't remember, so.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that because I think that's something that, you know, as, as we deal with the water quality, we, you know, one of the things that I've certainly gotten from the comp plan process is that we lack so many, we, we lack it in current and very, and some robust information about, about our natural resources. And this is, water obviously is one of them. So, so I appreciate being able to kind of understand this a little bit better. Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Toyoga?
Yeah, it's just a, just want to share a couple of interesting conversations I've had with, between, you know, local constituents, you know, builders and planners and engineers. Two different cities here in our, in our coast and our, in our county. You know, with going to discussion about septic systems, regulations, you know, placements of them. And in two cases, they were near wetland slash aquatic areas. And, you know, both times the comments were, well, we have to do all these things and, you know, so all these special provisions to, you know, provide septic in these areas. Yet there's a homeless camp here with 10 to 100 people, you know, depositing human waste in wetland and aquatic areas unchecked. And so you could have 100 leaky systems that won't do as much damage as these particular camps. So as, as we continue these discussions, I think that has to factor in. Because if we're worried about, you know, leaking septic, what about the unchecked balances that are, especially in the wetland and aquatic zones? So I think that has to be introduced into the conversation somewhere.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Toyoga. Commissioner Banks?
Kind of following Commissioner Toyoga's comments, especially if we're addressing, you know, different agencies and, and concerns regarding spray or anything, anything of the like from, from, from a specific agency or a specific type of landowner. I would, I would request that the conversation always encompass all agencies that do that type of, of, of work. I, I just find it frustrating that certain landowners are always targeted by conversations. And that if we're going to have a conversation of standards, that we, we apply it across the board, across all landowners, across everything. It's, it's just, it's, it's, I think frustrating to me that the focus is always continually on a specific industry when there are multiple industries and multiple agencies that use, you know, an example of herbicide or pesticide spray. So those are just my comments. And then, Gail, are we wanting to go down the policy recommendations? Or, or like, are we going to move on to, to the next, the next goal?
Well, I think that's really for the board and at your discretion, how you would like to handle the items. If there are specific line items and not everyone has comments on all of them, certainly comments can always be forwarded to us and we include those in our staff packet. Like we'll go out to the Joint Planning Commission and countywide citizen advisory committee. But really, it's at the board's discretion.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, I'm resonating with what Commissioner Banks said because when I was studying sources of pollution, what I, what I read was that the largest source of pollution was fertilizer on suburban lawns in terms of the impact on the water system in Oregon. Well, you know, I, the, the, what is it? The mote in my eye, the beam in my eye and the mote in yours. I mean, a sense of perspective. I mean, a sense of perspective and fair even treatment as we go forward, whether we go line by line or broad policy, so that nobody's demonized and everybody is respected for their contribution. Because here's the point of fact, everybody could do better. I could reduce more my use of the resources on the planet. I could reuse more, I could recycle more. And, and I just think everybody could do better. So how do we bring out the best in each other and design public discourse and public policies and the implementation and monitoring enforcement of those in a way that excites people's instinct to do good, to do common good? So I like the work that you've done to distill these. However we go forward, you've given us a good place to stand. And I think we as commissioners can honor that by having a respectful and civil discourse as we go forward.
I would agree with both comments. Do we have any other questions, comments? Do we want to move forward onto the next goal? Gail? Oh, Commissioner Banks?
Um, I think that my only comment is that I don't agree with all of the proposed policies that are being listed here. And at some point, um, we'll have to address that. I don't want to push past this without saying that some of these policies that are being recommended cause me a little bit of concern of unintended consequences. And then yes, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And we will have an opportunity correct to, to readdress this, so. Appreciate the comments. Gail?
Okay, thank you. I won't spend much time on goal eight because we did spend a little bit of time talking about it on October 13th. So I'm just going to summarize quickly the discussion and the goal. Goal eight is recreational needs. It's looking at our park system, basically, and what services we provide, what amenities we provide. And I know at our work session on the 13th, there was a discussion about should we, and if so, how do we adapt our, our park services to people who may be moving into our area who are coming from more urbanized areas? And I think there was, uh, my general takeaway from the discussion is that, you know, there, there is a fine balance and we don't want to amenitize to the point where we've changed the character and, and the reason why people come here to recreate or to move here. And hopefully I've summarized that correctly. But unless there's anything else to add at goal eight right now, I'd like to move on to goal 13 quickly.
Commissioner Banks?
I just want to say thank you, Director Hendrickson, for those statements regarding our character and our community. I don't feel like we should be changing ourselves to, to a point where, where we lose the character of our community. And I, I also think of the financial impacts of, of too many changes. So I just wanted to say I fully support and understand where you're going, Gail, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I, stop me if, if I mentioned this at one of our last meetings, but I am, I think it's very, very important that as we think about the provision of services and facilities for outdoor recreation in Clatsop County, that we work very closely on with ODF and with, especially the larger timber companies about how we, how, how we do this. I will, I will come back once again in, in next year's budget process and request that we update our, 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 our parks plan, basically. But I think it's really important that we, that we work very closely with ODF, ODF especially, because they're doing the same thing right there, right now. They've got their recreation program going. And, and so at some point here, I'd love to see something in the, in the, in the goal statements, excuse, I guess it's the policy statements, about working closely, in case I missed that, with, with all of the others who are doing this. So correct me if I'm wrong about what's here. I mean, I, um, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm kind of antsy about saying this, but I'm going to take the risk and talk anyway. When I look at outdoor recreation, I think for whom to do what? Because if I look, I mean, I hearken back to those Swedish grandmas bicycling down the roadway in a leisurely way. And then I compare in my mind, um, the, I want to call them the, the mountain bikers who are like superheroes on the trails. So where is there a safe and comfortable place for local people to be able to recreate? And, and that may put me at odds with somebody because fundamentally, when I go outside Clatsop County, the urban point of view is, oh, the coast, we come there to play. And I remember a former Cannon Beach city manager, since departed, who said, we are turning into Disneyland with free admission. So to, to Commissioner Bang's point and Commissioner Webb's point, how do we, how do we maintain the character of the place? We want to welcome people, but we want to keep this a place where people who put their heart and soul into it and who have for years are able to, I want to say, relax and enjoy life here, given the demographics that we don't have any control over. People have a right to come here if they want to come here. They don't have a right to do whatever they want to do, but just the increasing population density, I don't see that highlighted, I think, to the extent that it occurs to me that it's an issue. I think it gets translated sometimes into a problem with short-term residency. Well, it's increasing population of people who have a right to come here. How do we welcome them? How do we guide them? How do we educate them? And how do we maintain a quality of life that supports the character of the place that we love? How do we adapt to change? Because that's what we're dealing with is adaptation to change, to honor the past, to welcome the future and to, and to dance with that. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I, um, I really honor that point. Commissioner Thompson brought up the word density. And, um, and I think that what we're beginning to see is, I know there's been some discussion at the state parks level about limiting the number of people who can access parks, just on a daily basis of saying, okay, you know, we've, we've kept track of all the people who have entered and not left, and we're at X number, and we, and so, so we can't let anybody else come in. And those are, those are, those are tough issues. Those are really hard issues because you get, you know, in Oswald West, for instance, when we had the collapse of the, of one of the trails, and I think somebody wound up being killed a few days later. I mean, you know, it's a public safety issue. And so I, I would love to see something, I, I don't know whether it's, it belongs in the comps, it probably does, that we, we just, this is an issue we need to grapple with. I mean, we need to start being careful about parking spaces. And God knows our, our, our biggest challenge seems to be restrooms. Excuse me. And, 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 and the investments in, in safety issues like guardrails and things like that. So this is just something I think we have to deal with in our parks planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I agree with it. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair. So here's the thing that I keep remembering. Every time I drive along the highway, I see somebody standing on top of that wall or standing on top of the information signs. And I think to myself, don't you understand? We are trying to keep you safe. We are trying to keep you from falling down that cliff because it's some volunteer local responder who may get PTSD if your dead body is down that cliff because you climbed up on that wall. So those are the, those are the real issues on the ground that I think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
And, you know, oh.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Webb.
I'm sorry. One of the things that in our tourism work on the North Coast that we've been grappling with is messaging to the public. And, um, I, I almost would, at some point, like us to, to mention the fact that we need to talk better with our visitors. We need, you know, remember, I can't remember what season it is that we get these awful beachfront waves. And, and people just don't know it. They don't know what a sneaker wave is. They don't know all of our localisms about never turn your back to the ocean. So, so I think that maybe it would be appropriate in the comp plan to, to mention this, to talk about the fact that perhaps we have a responsibility to educate, to inform our visitors about, about different issues. And I know that the short, in the, people who are concerned about the short-term rentals, we've talked about the issue of having a poster in, if you have a license for a short-term rental, you have a poster in your house that talks about being kind to your neighbors. And, and it cites, you know, some of our regulations about lighting and fires and waste and et cetera. So I think it might be appropriate in the comp plan to be able to mention this, that we have a responsibility to inform our visitors about health and safety responsibilities. I just, a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I will say King Tides are coming up November 5th through the 7th. Those are right around the corner. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Gail.
Okay, thank you. I know we have just seven minutes left and we will also be discussing goal 13 again on October 27th. So briefly, just to summarize what this goal is about, when we talk about energy conservation, I think the first thing most people would think of is turn the light switch off when you leave the room. But goal 13 is really so much bigger than the light switch in your, in your bathroom or your bedroom. What it really is seeking to do is to recognize that we have non-renewable sources of energy, first of all. We may not have that much here in the county, but in other areas of the state, they, they may. And what we want to do with goal 13 is to find ways to minimize how quickly we deplete those non-renewable resources. And as part of that, we also have to have a conversation about renewable resources. And here we, our citizen advisory committees talked a lot about wind and solar power, but also wave power, both ocean waves and in the river, the Columbia River, that would be. And then we know that offshore wind turbines are becoming more and more prominent in discussions about renewable energy. And even though those wind turbines would be located outside of our territorial waters, what we do have to think about is the cables that bring that electricity over to the mainland have to land somewhere. And we know from what happened in Tillamook County with their Facebook cable and everything that happened with the, the drilling and the abandonment of the project, that there are impacts that will happen along our coast areas as these wind turbines come, come into play. And so we need to start having a community conversation about where those types of landings would be appropriate. You know, do we have any requirements for them other than the zoning that we would have to put into place to, to handle that? But that's probably the biggest discussion to think about right now. Also, on a, a smaller note, a few years ago, we put solar panels on top of the Boynton Building, and I believe that saved the county quite a bit of money. Monica can probably tell us the number off the top of her head. But as electric vehicles become more popular and prevalent in our society as well, do we want to look at county facilities and having, installing our own electric vehicle charging stations and other conservation measures that we can be taking on our county-owned properties? Whether it's solar panels to heat a restroom at one of our parks or upgrades that we would do to our own buildings? So those would be the bigger takeaway questions. And again, we'll have more opportunity for discussion on this topic on October 27th as well.
Thank you very much, Gail. I see Commissioner Banks has a question, comment?
I love the direction you're going, Director Hendrickson, in regards to what can the county do in our own facilities and with our own fleets as we move forward into the future? I feel like that that is, you know, 100% within our purview to apply all of our energy efficiency and environmentally friendly thoughts towards. As I was reading through all of these proposed policies, I think the one thing that kind of kept popping into my brain is where, is, is, it was mainly like wind turbines and placement and so on and so forth. And so as we continue on with this conversation and have further discussion, I would like us all to have within our mindset that we do live along a coastal community and we do have a very prevalent marbled miralet population that is currently trying to be protected. And I would really like to make sure that as we speak further, that we don't potentially counter habitat goals that we have set before us. And I feel like some of these conversations or some of these proposed policies will actually have a pretty impressive impact on our, our habitat goals. And so I would, I would hate to see, I would, I would just hate to see it. So anyhow, those were my takeaways from what I was reading.
Any other comments? Commissioner Toyoka?
Yes, and I know we'll have further discussion, but some of the proposed policies, you know, I just think are currently misguided based upon technology, you know? Had the fortune, I visited a wind turbine plant or manufacturing, you know, and upfront they were stating for this particular turbine, you know, for larger facility, larger amount of generating power. It was a 50-year payback for a lifespan of, the turbine was 35 years, so it never penciled. So I think, you know, as technology increases, we're going to close that gap and make it more, you know, viable solution. Same with our vehicles, you know, and we're in the car business, you know? So, you know, I love our hybrids very much because they increase the fuel, you know, they stretch our EPA, it's, it's just so much better. But a lot of the, the batteries, you know, the lithium batteries right now, if you look at the environmental cost to manufacture those battery, again, it's like 15 years of environmental damage for a 10-year battery. And then the infrastructure that is non-existent to support fleets. So is it a great idea and concept? Yes. Is it viable with today's infrastructure and technology? No. So we have to, I think as we're going through this, we have to balance, you know, the desire or the altruistic ambition with, you know, what is realistic in the next 20-year shot? Same thing with nuclear power. I just look at that and they, they want to eliminate it, but I'm like, you know, the United States Navy's been using nuclear for 50 years, incident-free. Europe has been using it for about the same timeframe. I think with technology advances, it becomes more viable. And so then we can't just eliminate that cross-section. We have to always keep our eyes open to all alternatives and look at, you know, all advantages we have, you know, if we're looking at a 20-year look. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Appreciate the comments. Commissioner Banks?
And I don't know if this is a, even a topic or realistic, but Commissioner Toyoka brought up the lithium. Is, is there even a way? Is, is there even a way to know if the, you know, the, the batteries are harvested kind of very similarly to like diamonds in a non-conflict environment? I feel like if, if, or like, I don't know. I, I just, that's where my brain always goes when I think about, um, when I think about going electric on the road is, is, are those minerals being harvested in a conflict-free manner? So that's just my thought. Sorry to squirrel away from, from goals.
No, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Appreciate the comments. Commissioner Thompson?
And, and to follow up with that, Commissioner Hendrickson, we have given you practically an impossible job. Because what we're talking about is complex adaptive interactive systems. And to Commissioner Toyoka's point, we're asking, as we plan, to consider all of the costs and all of the benefits going through time, going over place. That's really daunting. And so when we look at our resources, I mean, can we, I asked the, the State Economist Office, Josh Lerner, I called him and said, "Josh, I want complete and valid data." So as we make policy decisions, I don't know how you can find us complete and valid data. Because I think that's really the question. What I see in the efforts of, uh, that are here on the paper before us, I think people have a piece of the picture that for them is the complete picture. But we're the elected policymakers who really do have to see the complete picture of all the costs, all the benefits, if we're to do our job of protecting the people in the place and give county taxpayers the best value for the money. I think this is part of the discussion we have going forward is validated data that is comprehensive and complete so that we make sound policy decisions. Y'all can't do all of that research, but to the extent that we have, um, validated information from trusted partners, I think that's going to be an important, um, foundation for our work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I'm reminded of a few years ago when we talked about the offshore wave turbines and, uh, the discussion, there was a lot of momentum in favor of them at the time. And we didn't have the perspective of the, of the Oregon Fisherman's Cable Committee and some of these other impacted parties. And so it, it was up to the Clatsop County electeds to make sure that everyone was at the table and that perspective was provided. And certainly, it became clear that some of the things, you know, with regards to where the placement of some of these turbines were, were, uh, were done for economic reasons. Because you can't string that cable as far as you'd like to, to avoid fishing grounds and other things, because it's extremely expensive, millions and millions and millions of dollars. So, um, all of these factors need to be weighed in and it is a huge, I, Commissioner Thompson's correct. It's a daunting task to try to take all these things in and not knowing what the future really holds. But you can only, uh, do our best to bring the stakeholders to the table and have these thorough discussions. Any other comments, questions? Gail, anything else you would like to?
Nope. Thank you for your time.
Okay, really appreciate your, all your hard work. And I think it was echoed many times about how much we appreciate all you're doing, methodically going through, um, the, the comprehensive plan update. I, I know I appreciate getting this vetting amongst, uh, amongst us and, and, and letting us kind of review the work that's done and then also provide our perspective. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as it was also kind of alluded to, Commissioner Banks had comments about things that we might want to add. I think that, that we'll, we, we will need to be able to provide our perspective ongoing. So this remains open. This is just kind of our first pass at it. Any other, I think we covered the agenda. So do we have anything else that anybody would like to bring up? County manager, anything else?
No, nothing from me today. Thank you for your board's time.
Commissioner Thompson?
Okay, we're talking about fires again. So County Manager got us, uh, Commissioner Banks and myself involved in a meeting with interested capable stakeholders talking about fire. And Chief Joey Daniels, Seaside Fire Chief, raised an issue for us to contemplate, which is, uh, the fire chiefs need a, a county ordinance if they're going to be able to, um, to deal with the impacts of fires. So be on the lookout, because I'm pretty sure the county manager has it in his basket list of, um, 500,000 things or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anything else for the good of the order here? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Hope everybody has a great Wednesday and great rest of your week. We'll see you. Bye-bye.